Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Otsego City Council meeting. Tonight is Monday, December 9th. Adra, can you have the record show that our city attorney, city planners, city engineer, along with all council members, our assistant city administrator and the city administrator are present? At this time, I'd like to ask you all to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our first item of business this evening is the open forum. This is the portion of the meeting where you can come to the podium, state your name and address, and limit comments to five minutes or less. Would anyone like to speak at this time?
Hi, everybody. Jeannie Holland, County Commissioner. Just wanted to let you guys know that last week in Maple Grove, they had a listening session for the Housing Work Group about HOAs. And I have to say, about two-thirds of them were Otsego residents. A lot of really good conversation. Representative Bonner was very impressed with the turnout because over sixty people came, which surprised all of them. I talked to Senator Lucero today, and he said they are doing a, just from everything they've heard through all these work groups, they have two down at the state capitol. I was down at the state capitol with Commissioner Shane and Roxanne a couple of weeks prior, and they told us about this working group. So that's why we hit social media to let people, like, hear, they wanted to hear their voices. So it was great to have so many people come. I was thankful that Isabel came. A lot of horror stories about HOAs. And Senator Lucero came and met today at the county with two of the commissioners and some of our administration about all of our legislative priorities. And one of them, of course, is HOAs. And he said, what they've been finding is they're going to have to do a complete, like, get down to the core and do a re-haul and do a lot of state statutes because there's a lot of people that are suffering, especially when a big management company comes in, like we've seen. And I, and I did tell them, Mayor, that you had the same conversations with a lot of these HOAs. And it's, we had somebody testify that, from the Wright County Community Action, he has done foreclosures for many years. And in an HOA, you don't have as many rights as if you lose your home. You have, like, three different sets of rules when you own a home. But when in an HOA, they, you don't have those rights. They can at any time foreclose on your property. So, so that was, you know, disheartening. So, yeah, so Senator Lucero and Representative Hudson met with me, Commissioner Shane, and our administration to talk about our legislative priorities. That's one of them. And one of them, too, is a driver's license. Anybody that has a sixteen-year-old knows that they have to sit at midnight and hope that they get a, you know, somewhat close appointment to go get their driver's license. We want, we want to do that. We were, we're talking about making it easier for CDLs. And then keeping that homestead tax break that we saw this year. That helped our residents here, except for it's a one-and-done. So they want to keep, like, having that, you know, go forward. So hopefully, we can see that happen. But, but, yeah, it was a good, it was a good conversation. We're going to be really down at the legislature a lot, especially with the HOA. I have promised quite a few of your residents in Otsego that if I have to sit in the steps of the state capitol to see those changes happen, I will. But thankfully, it is a very bipartisan problem. And they see it, and they're aware, and there's a lot of big players on this work group. So the, the League of Cities, lobbyist groups for HOAs, as well as legal aid. So there, there's, like, twenty people on this work group that are sorting through all these, all these, you know, problems that they're seeing. And it is a statewide, international problem. So, yeah. But, and then lastly, I want to just say thank you to Jeff and Brittany. I'm sad that you guys are going to be leaving. I'll miss seeing your smiling faces. I have witnessed you all. You all are amazing. But you two have great passion for the city. And it, and it's clear by just watching you guys perform up here. And you're so kind. You have, you perform things with grace. When people are angry, you, you're just very calm. I've been in, I, I was on the school board for fourteen years, so I know what it's like to sit on that end. And then just being a commissioner for two years. But it, it's a huge, you guys did a huge service to Otsego. So because of that, I got you guys a hundred grand. And does anybody have any questions?
Great.
Thank you.
All right. Would anyone else like to speak?
Good evening, everybody. Corey Tanner, seven nine five two Palm Green Avenue Northeast. I just wanted to say thank you to Jeff and Brittany. You know, it's sometimes it's a thankless job, as everybody knows, being on council. And, you know, when I came on council the first time, I had an established council around me, you know, kind of learned the ropes. You guys didn't have that. You were thrown right into the mix, and, you know, you guys did wonderful. I'm proud of you. You know, whether people agree with it or not, you stood up for what you thought was right for the city. And you owned it, you know. And like it was said, you guys handled it with grace. So thank you for all of your efforts. And I think the mark that, that you can leave here tonight, knowing, I think, you know, staff seems to really love you guys. And I think that's a testament to the kind of people. No? Well, maybe that's my perception. Again, thank you. You know, I know you guys won't be too far away in the future, so.
Thank you.
Good luck to you.
Thank you, Corey.
Any other comments?
And Isabel, I don't like to give my answers out. Thank you. Just want to make sure, like, because one of the things, I'm going with the fire department, is the, you said, the reason that we are making a big fire department was because we want to rent out the place, and we can make current money. Obviously, we cannot do. And I would like to know that, as a respect. And also, well, we all know the Rogers built the fire department for pretty much part of the money that we are spending. And it's just, you're not being clear with the population. I feel like you are here taking that, we cannot vote because you want to push this up. And I just still, one more time, disagree with what you're doing. I think a lot of people are going to go in foreclosure because of your decisions. And that's why I'm kind of happy Jeffrey and the other guys leaving. But unfortunately, we, it's not the right people here. So not with the rest of the people there. Grateful, I'm not, which everybody knows already. So thank you. Thanks, God. You guys are gone. And unfortunately, we don't have the right people still, but we're going to push for it. And the, with the right people be sitting in that place. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Vincent Peterson, one four oh six fourth seventh circle. I would just like to express my extreme dismay and disappointment in the EDA action that was taken in the previous meeting. And I would say to, you know, please reconsider, you know, building this fire department. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Michelle Lund, one four nine one six Organ Place. I just want to say thank you so much to everyone that's on City Council. Mayor, I think you guys have done a great job asking good questions and striving to achieve a successful city. And thank you, Jeff, and to Brittany for closing out your terms for years. It's amazing. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your efforts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? All right, seeing no more comments, we will move on to item two to consider our agenda for approval. Does anyone have anything that they would like to add or delete at this time? Adam?
Mayor, just a note of clarification, there were additional materials passed out to the council, both for items five point one and six point one at DAAS prior to the meeting.
Everybody got that? Perfect. All right, we don't have anything else. Send a motion to approve the agenda would be in order. Madam Mayor? Yes, Brittany?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to prove the agenda is written.
All right. Did I miss you saying something?
We're all just waiting for it.
Oh. I was like, you said, right. I was like.
Earlier, I had said, I had said I was going to make the motion.
Okay, okay. All right. Motion by Brittany, seconded by Jeff. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to the consent agenda, a motion would be in order.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Brittany?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda as written. Second.
Motion by Brittany, seconded by Tina. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to item four point one, it's a public hearing for the fee schedule. All right.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel. Item four point one is to consider adoption of an ordinance that set the 2025 fee schedule. So in your packet, there is an RCA. There are redline and clean versions of the ordinance. There's also a summary form that would be published pending council action. So at this point, I'm just going to highlight a few of the bigger changes. Throughout the budget process, there was consideration on meeting stipends for the advisory commissioners. So this is the first change in those meeting stipends since at least 2012. So those are accounted for within the ordinance this evening. Now, some of the other bigger items are for utility fees. So the city has commissioned studies for water availability and connection charges, and also the same for sanitary sewer. So the changes in the ordinance this evening reflect those recommendations. So that is an increase on the water side and no change on the sanitary sewer side. Park dedication is another fee that's analyzed annually. So the city planners worked with the Wright County Assessors Office to gain evaluations for different property types from residential, commercial, and industrial throughout the city. So there are changes recommended for each of those three property types for new plans to get considered for approval by the city council. Stormwater impact fees, this is similar to water and sewer availability. This is a development-related fee. It is paid at the time of final plan. This fee is increasing at an inflationary index of zero point nine one percent based on the E and R news record for November twenty-three to November twenty-four. Water meters, each year, these fees reflect the change in cost that the city has to purchase them from vendors, and they are charged out as part of the billing permit. And then lastly, the, one of the other more significant changes was the public work section. So city staff from across all of our departments reviewed the city equipment that's included in the fee schedule and made sure that we had all of those pieces accounted for and made sure that the rates for potentially charging those out in a time of emergency is representative of what those vehicles cost. So there is a requirement for a public hearing that has been properly noticed. There have been written comments received by city staff prior to the meeting. So with that, we'd recommend that you conduct a public hearing, and then staff can answer any questions.
Thank you. All right, at this time, I will open the public hearing. And you'll come to the podium, state your name and address, and comments are regarding the fee schedule. Does anyone wish to speak? I'll ask again. There's any comments on the fee schedule? And I'll ask one more time. All right, we will close the public hearing, bring it back up to council. If you have questions for staff, as Adam said, there were redline items and changes. Otherwise, no questions, a motion would be in order.
Mayor?
Yes, Jeff?
I'd like to make a motion. Motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-four dash thirteen, amending the city code establishing the 2025 fee schedule and approved publication in summary form.
Second. Motion by Jeff, seconded by Brittany. Is there any discussion?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Sorry, I just have one quick question. I'm trying to find it. But we eliminated the fees for documents. Are those just going to be like a per-page cost now?
Let's see here.
Just page ten.
Page ten, okay. Because we did keep copies of page eight. I just cleaned up some of the language there. On page ten is related to city, floodplain and other documents. So other documents, I would say, would fall under just the general copies section of the fee schedule. And then maps, all of the maps that we would have available for print are on the city website. And it's an extremely rare instance where somebody would come in and request a map. And so if, if that is the case, we would just assume that would fall under the twenty-five cents per copy.
Sounds good. Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions? No other questions? We've already had the motions. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to item five point one, under public safety, the Fire Emergency Services Station Project.
Mayor, counsel, thank you. This item is related to action that was previously taken by the Economic Development Authority after meeting at five thirty this evening. What is up for consideration by the city council? This is related to the Fire Emergency Services Station Project. In your packet, there is a resolution that would basically authorize the subsequent three documents. Those are a ground lease agreement and a lease agreement for the facility. Both of those two lease agreements are between the city of Otsego and the Economic Development Authority. And then the third thing that that resolution would authorize is a continuing disclosure. So as required by the Securities and Exchange Commission, there are ongoing disclosures and reporting that the city has to do, not only this bond, but any of our debt issues that we have. And so this is just outlining what some of those requirements are to meet that. Again, the resolution, the lease agreements, and the continuing disclosure were drafted by bond counsel at Taft Law. Representative Martin McGill is here this evening if there are any questions on those documents. Otherwise, I can answer any questions as well.
All right, should we have Martin come up? Does anyone have any questions? We, as you said, we got a new document, but it's, the number is correct. That was added in from what was in our packet.
Correct, Mayor. This was one of the items distributed to the council this evening, so.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right. Also, do we have comments? Any other motions?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. Motion to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-four dash eighty-six, authorizing the execution and delivery of a ground lease agreement, a lease agreement and a continuing disclosure undertaking.
Second. Motion by Jeff, seconded by Brittany. Is there any discussion?
Madam Mayor? In order to get a credit rating for the bond, the justification provided is that the creation of our own fire department will allow us to, quote, "control costs", and that having a municipal fire department will, quote, "ultimately result in savings relative to the current arrangement". In this sense, the term "control costs" is actually a euphemism for owning those costs. The fire service contracts today actually control costs because they spread them out to benefit from the economies of scale. We can share resources. We have seven fire stations today, and we'll be going down to one. The idea that owning those costs means we will have a council who is willing to sharpen their pencils and deny funding to a fire department is, on its face, ludicrous. We can't even put a park project on pause. So the citizens should have zero confidence that we would be in a position to control the costs of a fire department. The contracts allow us to do that today, but having our own department, fire trucks, fire station, staffing, equipment, and pensions, we'll see those costs increase, as they have in every city that has taken this step. We continue to hear the claim that we can do it cheaper, but I don't think anyone seriously believes that. Our city website used to say that owning our own municipal fire department would not result in a property tax increase, and that turned out to not be true. We were told not to worry about the costs of the contracts going forward because we'd be able to cancel them, and that those cities would provide services for free. That also turned out to not be true. So now we are looking at a single station in the middle of our city, a situation that the fire study referred to as the worst-performing scenario of all the scenarios they examined. They're putting a station in the part of the city that is less populated because this station was never meant to be a standalone station. It was always intended to be a substation to be operated and managed by our contract providers. The fire study presented a roadmap for fire service in Otsego. We had chosen to ignore those recommendations. I suspect it will not take long before the next council realizes just how big of a mistake this is and predict that we will have to continue the contracts in some fashion because that's exactly what the fire study showed. The alternative, in order to match the performance of our contract providers, is that we would need more fire stations. That fact should put an end to the claim that we can do it cheaper. The idea that owning our own municipal fire department will allow us to control costs or that it will be cheaper than the contracts is not grounded in reality. It is a falsehood that is being perpetrated on our citizens in order to justify a decision that was not based on the facts. I am choosing to vote no on this because it will not improve the physical or financial safety of our residents.
Any other comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion passes four to one. Okay, Martin. All right, moving on to administration, six point one, the 2025 budget and property tax levy. Adam?
Mayor, counsel, thank you. It's been a long budget season. Started back in May. He was the city council, but staff met a total of eight special city council meetings, prepared for the budget adoption, which you are being asked to consider this evening. So there are three main pieces. There are operating budgets housed in a resolution. There is a property tax levy housed in a resolution, and the city's capital improvement plan also has a separate resolution. So I'll go through a little bit here this evening, starting with the operating budget resolution. So this covers the general fund. There is a section for the three public utility funds, water, sanitary sewer, and stormwater. There's a section for special revenue funds, which are the three tax increment districts within the city. Fourth, there's the debt service funds. There are two outstanding debt issues that are funded and have a budget. And then lastly, just this evening, the Economic Development Authority adopted a resolution requesting a budget for consideration by the city council. That is included as section five within the budget resolution. These are budgets for 2025. Moving to the next, and before I go away from there, in, in your packet, there are budget summaries for each of these five components. Again, this is summarized information. There are significantly more details and lineups behind the scenes that you all saw as part of your budget review process throughout the summer and fall. The second piece, again, that I would be asking the council to consider is setting a final property tax levy for payable 2025. So back in September, the council adopted a preliminary levy in the amount of nine million, seven hundred and thirty-three thousand, six hundred and forty-six dollars. Within your packet this evening is a nine million, three hundred and ninety-two thousand, eight hundred and seventy-dollar levy being proposed as final. So the increase for the final levy is four point five percent. That's comparable to the eight point two nine percent that was adopted as the preliminary levy. So the council did reduce the property tax levy from September to what is being proposed here this evening. Again, that is for taxes payable 2025. The third item relating to the resolution would be the capital improvement plan. This is for the period of 2025 through 2034 and is comprehensive across all funds of the city laying out capital needs and estimates for the next ten years. So with that, I will field any questions from the council, if you have any.
Also, any questions in regards to your pocket and items presented this evening? Questions?
Madam Mayor? Yes, Brittany? So, Adam, that's what we received tonight at the meeting. It's essentially, again, just the numbers that were. Resolution twenty-six seven.
Mayor, counsel, Resolution twenty twenty-four dash eighty-seven was revised from what was in the packet originally. A new version was distributed to you at the DAAS. The only items that changed within that would be in section five related to the Economic Development Authority.
Any other questions?
Madam Mayor? Yes, Brittany? We have three separate motions.
I do have them listed as three separate motions.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-four dash eighty-seven, adopting the 2025 annual operating budgets. For a second?
Second.
Motion by Brittany, seconded by Jeff. Is there any discussion?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to start out by addressing some of the positives. First, a reduction of a hundred thousand dollars was identified in the pavement management fund by taking a second look at what would be needed for future capital expenditures. Thank you to our city administrator for doing that. I also want to extend my gratitude to the utility, streets, and parks department, for departments, for working together to find a solution to an issue we had over the summer. During the expansion of the West Wastewater Treatment Facility, the weather didn't exactly cooperate, which made the ground too wet to continue construction. We also had too much clay in the work area. So the utility department worked with the streets department to use the extra millings from the road reconstruction project to shore up some of the ground. They then coordinated with the parks department to take the extra clay and build the sledding hill here at Prairie Park. Had these departments not coordinated to come up with the solution, the project would have realized an extra two hundred and twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two dollars and seventy-one cents in cost. Now, those savings don't show up on a budget line because it's money we didn't have to spend. But on behalf of the residents and taxpayers, I thank those departments for identifying creative ways to save on expenses. Ultimately, I cannot approve this budget tonight because it is too much. Our estimated growth rate in just over three percent in this budget exceeds that. Our estimated growth rate in just over three percent in this budget exceeds that, meaning we are continuing to spend faster than we are growing. That presents a risk to our city and to our residents, and although that risk may not be experienced for years, it is irresponsible to continue that trend. The council had the opportunity to reduce expenditures below three percent and chose not to do so. I will not be supporting this motion.
Any other comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion passes four to one.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Brittany?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution twenty twenty four dash eight eighty-eight, setting a final property tax levy for taxes payable in twenty twenty five.
Second. Motion by Brittany, seconded by Tina. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion passes four to one.
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution twenty twenty four dash eighty-five, adopting the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five, twenty twenty, twenty thirty-four capital improvement plan. Who is it? It was eighty-nine?
Yep.
I just went to my clinic.
Does she need to read that?
Why don't you read it? Okay.
Motion to adopt Resolution twenty twenty four dash eighty-nine, adopting the twenty twenty five dash twenty thirty-four capital improvement plan.
Second.
Motion by Brittany, seconded by Jeff. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Alright, moving on to item seven point one, the cannabis business. I'll turn this over to see later.
Thank you, Mayor. As you're aware, Minnesota Legislature and the governor signed into law Minnesota statutes, three hundred and forty-two, which legalizes use and sale businesses involving cannabis. There are fourteen businesses listed by the statute, ranging from retail sales, medical sale, medical uses and sales, as well as cultivation, processing, manufacture and distribution. The statute provides that retail sales will begin ideally on January first, twenty twenty five, but the administrative procedures haven't been finally established, licenses haven't been issued, so that's unlikely to happen. However, the statute does provide opportunity for local controls to be imposed and the approach recommended by city staff and other cities is taking to have those regulations in place before licenses go into effect, be better prepared. So the local controls are limited in scope as to what can be addressed by the statute specifically. At times, the legislature will do this over certain issues where they want to provide consistent regulation across the state and avoid unique regulations that may be imposed in certain instances or to provide for a guarantee that the uses they're allowing for in the statute will be allowed to occur within individual cities. So the scope of regulations can include restrictions on public use. Wright County has already adopted an ordinance prohibiting public use of cannabis countywide, so it's not necessary for Atsigo to do so. We've included that provision as part of the local ordinance as well. There's a registration provision as part of the licensing process where the Office of Cannabis Management, which is the state agency responsible for administration and implementation of the statute, contacts the local government units to verify compliance with the zoning ordinance, compliance with the building code, compliance with the fire code, as well as the more operational procedures that are set forth by the statute. Atsigo has already approved a joint powers agreement with Wright County whereby the county will be the lead joint or lead local government unit. If they get a request for a license, the county will contact city staff to verify the zoning is in place to allow for the use that's being requested. In terms of the zoning provisions that can be adopted, these are time, plan, place and manner regulations. Basically, the state is saying you have to allow for retail operations. There is the ability to limit the number of licenses issued for your jurisdiction. There are also provisions dealing with retail setbacks from certain sensitive uses and limitations on hours of operation. There's also the ability within the zoning ordinance to find which zoning districts these various uses would be allowed as and are within, and then how they are allowed, whether they're permitted uses, uses by administrative permit, if they're infirm. Really, the only policy issue that comes into play for the city in dealing with this, per the discretion pyramid, is the extent to which the city wants to implement the controls allowed by the statute. You could take a hands-off approach and say, the extent to which the state through the county is going to administer the operation is sufficient to avoid any impacts to public health, safety, welfare, or you can go the opposite end and impose all the regulations to the extent allowed by statute. We've taken the approach initially of drafting the ordinance sets before you to take the most conservative approach, that is to put in place the regulations that the statute has allowed. That would give the city the time to see how these businesses are established, how they operate and evaluate them further. At some point, the city may decide this is no different than a liquor store or tobacco sales, which are not regulated beyond simple zoning standards and pull those regulations back in the future. So as to the number of retail registrations, the city can limit the number of retail stores or medical uses within the city to a minimum of one license per twelve thousand five hundred population. That's based, obviously, on the current population of Atsigo. There'd be two licenses potentially issued, or I'm sorry, just one currently, but we'll soon cross that threshold by the demographers' estimates for two. There's a second tier that if a county has issued licenses up to its population threshold of twelve thousand five hundred, then the city isn't required to issue any licenses. So for example, if all the cannabis businesses based on population of Wright County choose to locate in a city other than Atsigo, Atsigo isn't required to issue even one license to another business. There are setback requirements that the statute provides for. These are the only buffer setbacks allowed for the retail uses. Schools is a thousand feet, daycares five hundred feet, residential treatment facilities meeting a facility such as North Star out on County Road thirty-nine where the patients are living at the facility five hundred feet, and parks. There's some additional guidance in the statute and incorporated as part of the ordinance that as particularly to parks, it needs to be from a park element, not simply just property line to property line. So you're measuring from the store property to the playset, basically. So if we get a request, we're obviously going to have to look very carefully at some of these setbacks and how they would apply to that given use. There's also limits on the hours of operation included in the statute. They have, under the statute, two limitations, eight AM to two AM for Monday through Saturday, and then ten AM to two AM for Sundays. But the statute also allows the city, the option of limiting seven days a week, ten AM to nine PM. That's the regulation that we've included as part of the ordinance before you. Temporary cannabis events, these were somewhat undefined and the planning commission did discuss these, basically it's sale of cannabis materials and goods at a typically unlicensed location as a temporary event by someone that's holding a cannabis event organizer provision. The ordinance that we included in your packet that Wright County is putting in place is that the only types of cannabis or hemp-derived products that could be sold at a temporary event would be those lower potency hemp edibles. There would also be no onsite consumption except for those lower potency hemp edibles as well. In terms of zoning districts, they're prohibited, the retail sales in particular, and these fourteen businesses are prohibited in residential districts that doesn't pertain to someone using cannabis. You can certainly do that in your home under the provisions of the statute. You also have the ability to grow a limited amount of cannabis material in your home as well, but for a business-type use, we've basically separated these into the retail and medical uses that would be proposed to be allowed in the B one and B three zoning districts. And for the rest of the uses which are more in the product side of the, and the development side of it, those would be allowed in the two industrial districts. We didn't include the I three district because it doesn't have utilities in terms of city sewer and water services, which would be required under the interim use permits drafted to allow those permitted or those specific businesses. And in terms of the B one district, again, it's simply limiting it to the number of potential zoning districts which these businesses could be located now, but could be added in the future. And you can see on the map I'll have in a few slides where it's not a significant impact whether it's allowed in the B one district or not as to the number of potential locations within the city. Other standards that apply generally, you can't have public view of the product or public displays. Everything's behind the counter in a secure area. There are also provisions dealing with they can't have cannabis flower images on their signage, for example. So those are all included in the statute. There's the requirement to have ventilation systematic, which prevent the smell of cannabis from outside the location. And for retail uses, everything needs to be indoors and there can't be any onsite consumption. For the interim uses, for those more product side businesses, we did include a residential district buffer. We know from the existing business in Atsigo that we have heard that you can smell the product from the greenhouse and adjacent farms. So some separation is appropriate there. The hours would be the same as allowed to retail businesses, but under the interim use permit, those could be expanded to allow greater hours. For example, if there was the need for a third shift or to have people present overnight tending to the cultivation, et cetera, that can be accommodated. More detailed provisions regarding emissions from the facilities, indoor use only, mandatory connection to utilities, as I said, as well as provisions dealing with the security of the location as well. The zoning ordinance also does provide general criteria for allowance of interim uses, which apply to any such application, and those would be in place here, too. One of the reasons for the interim use approach versus a conditional use permit is the ability for the city to sunset that approval or terminate it upon a certain happening of events. One of those would be change of ownership of the business. So there, once the conditional use permit is established, that typically runs with the property. So for example, Holiday Gas Station is allowed as a conditional use. Holiday can close, somebody can come in and run the exact same business without coming back to the city. The interim use permit will require a new operator would come back at the same location and seek city approval to verify again compliance with these provisions, since they do deal with operational elements as well. So the map, in terms of the zoning and where these properties would be allowed, that's somewhat difficult to see, but the blue areas at County Road thirty-nine and Highway one oh one, there's only actually one developed property in that area that would be eligible for cannabis businesses. Otherwise, there are schools and daycares throughout that area that limit it. There is the undeveloped property at County Road forty-two and Highway one oh one. There is commercially zoned property in the B two district, or excuse me, B three district at County Road thirty-eight and Highway one oh one, as well as the Costco development at I ninety-four. That would be opportunity areas for cannabis businesses to locate. So as you can see on the image on the upper right-hand side of the screen, those would be the B one districts that are currently not proposed to be allowed, but could be added in the future. The city council may also direct that we modify the proposed ordinance to include those districts as well. City staff is recommending approval of the opposed ordinance amendment based on the goal of having these regulations in place by the start of the year. As I said, we're taking the most conservative approach allowed by statute and implementing these standards. Can certainly amend these over time as circumstances warrant. The planning commission did hold a public hearing at their meeting December second, because this is the zoning ordinance amendment. There were no public comments. The planning commission did discuss a number of the elements, as I said, particularly temporary cannabis events. They also discussed at length the zoning districts in which this should be allowed in. There was also somewhat of a general conversation of, do you just take the hands-off approach, same as liquor stores was the example cited? But the majority favored putting these regulations in place as proposed and then reviewing them over time as the industry becomes more established going forward.
Thanks. Can you, can you really quickly go back to the map? We're, that would be perfect. And this is different than with the planning commission. You had a different area to the north on County Road forty-two before.
The area thirty-nine where Riverview Liquorette was shown, that was an opportunity area, but there is a accredited high school program in the adjacent building that would preclude that location.
Okay, so the thousand feet. And we did talk at the planning commission also that if a business like a daycare were to set up in a strip mall after they're in place, that doesn't force that business out.
Correct.
Council questions or staff?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Ryan?
What happens in the scenario where we have, let's say we had a licensed business and then another one comes in and we have the ability to say we aren't even entertaining new, any more licenses because we're not required to. But then another one comes in and maybe we like that business more. We say, okay, well, we'll give you a license.
Mayor, so the ordinance would have to be amended to lift the restriction, otherwise the administrative process would be Wright County contacts city staff and city staff advises Wright County that our ordinance allows the one registration based on our current population no further allowed. So it would take a positive action by the council, separate from any specific license request, to lift that limit.
And can you clarify, we, I mean, we did a joint powers agreement with the county, so aren't the licenses pooled at the county level?
Mayor, so this is one item that's still kind of under discussion with Office of Cannabis Management and cities as to how these licenses are implemented and Administrator Hilli has been working with the group at Wright County on the joint powers agreement. But the direction from the county was that city should implement both the county-wide restriction and the local ordinance to provide both tiers.
Okay.
So I guess that was going to be my question, kind of a follow-up to Ryan on that. If the county has the main number, and as you said, everybody wants to open up in our our neighboring city in Wright County, that city would have to allow that many to go into that location also, right? I mean, so it's, they're talking with each other and I can't imagine one city is going to say, we'll take all. I don't even know what the, what the main number would be.
Mayor, this is something Assistant Administrator Hilli can probably provide more information about as to, you know, what direction the cities in Wright County are going as far as the elements.
Mayor, there are some communities I know that are open to having multiple different properties or businesses within their actual communities, and so that's been a big conversation with, at the county level with cities is what cities are interested in allowing, who's allowing to be able to limit the amount. Obviously, some of these things differ with some communities that aren't going into the JPA as they all have their own police departments, and so they're administering a lot of this internally as well. And that's where kind of the complication, waiting for Office of Cannabis Management to kind of provide some insight of how that works. Is it based on your JPA population or is it based on the countywide, kind of how those different numbers play into it? But I do know that there's a few communities that have signed the JPA that are interested in having more than their minimum requirement. And that's why they recommend it. If you are looking to limit to include it at the zoning level at the community itself, because that needs to get reviewed, that zoning, the county can have a zoning ordinance that applies to the city. The city can be more restrictive.
Madam Mayor, can, can someone remind me, when we did the JPA, did we, does the money that would be received from a cannabis business and part of their sales, I think, go to the city? Are we giving that then to the county?
Mayor, no, the JPA actually brings that money back to the city with the JPA. They receive the registration fees, but the actual tax collection, if it's within the community, would come back to the city itself.
Okay.
Mayor, I would also add that the statute provided limits on what the registration fees would be, and it would cost the city much more than the registration fees to administer that component of it in terms of the inspections that are required and everything. So it's beneficial on that standpoint from a staffing level and also cost to have counties' resources applied to that.
One question, so when we have our liquor stores, we have, if they fail their compliance, then that comes back to the city as we have certain standards that they have to meet, and there's fines with that. Is the JPA or cities discussing how that looks, that compliance later on? Is the JPA or cities discussing how that looks with that compliance later on also?
Uh, Mayor, yes, the county is looking at their ordinance of addressing how those processes work. If there's noncompliance with whether it's an inspection or signage, they're writing that within their ordinance that we would follow. As they would actually be doing the registration enforcement of the inspections, making sure product is getting tested. So yeah, they're in the process of creating that. I, I don't know exactly what it'll look like yet, they're still in the works of that ordinance. We meet again next week where hopefully they'll have an updated version that they'll share with the cities.
And Mayor, the statute also is somewhat unique in that typically like for liquor ordinances, we have an application process outlined as part of the city code. That puts in place due process and how that is all handled. For example, with these cannabis licenses, that processing basically is taken from the local jurisdiction up to the state. So if there's an issue with the cannabis license processing, Wright County or and or the city reports it to the Office of Cannabis Management and they deal with it. So it will be slightly different than liquor licensing or than we're familiar with.
And this would be in regards to product, the testing of the product.
Violation.
Okay.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I had a question, Dan, as far as the inspection goes. So if a business comes in and they register with the county, the county says, okay, this is where they want to go. The city says, sure. Then at that point, are they automatically given? The go ahead or does the inspection prior to them opening or do they have to have their ducks in a row prior to them just saying? The city says, yes, you may have a, a shop here, but you still have to do this, this, this before you can open? Is it monitored prior to the go ahead?
So all the city is commenting on is the location and the compliance with the zoning ordinance, location wise and the building code. Then the county will verify, you know, the setup of the store, the handling of the items and through the inspection process and the licensing that, that goes on at that level.
I have more questions. Mayor, Dan, just real quick on in regards to the setbacks, who came up with those?
Mayor, the state did as part of the law. If you look at cannabis regulations in other states, they're all very similar. It's clear that when Minnesota developed their statute, they looked at Colorado and Washington and Oregon and these other places that have allowed it previously. Because they're, the requirements all mirror themselves pretty much through and through.
Thank you. The park thing was a little interesting, how you talked about it being actually the place structure, not just the park boundary. How does that work, for example? Carex, like, how would that, because there is no actual structure.
My interpretation is that we could regulate the setback from, for example, the paddle boat landing, the kayak landing, excuse me.
Sure.
The kayak landing and the active facilities, but not the trail portion.
Okay. So it's gotta be something that everyone may use.
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, that was just interesting, man.
It, it, as again, I said, this is a different approach to regulation than, for example, adult businesses. Where the setback is measured property line to property line. So if you're measuring a setback from the Dale Lerky soccer fields, it's to that property line, it's not to the play structure at Prairie Park.
Most of these places that are on here do not have businesses built at this point.
Correct.
They would be building the building too.
Correct. Mayor, can we go through those? Cause my interpretation is not that. I mean, the pink is available.
So there aren't any buildings here except for this, and this again is B one zoning, so it's not proposed to be allowed. This is LaFave Carpet.
Yep.
This is the multi tenant retail building with Twin City Fitness. The only building over in Atsigo Waterfront East would be the Kennedy Vision Building that was just put up by Arrow Philippines. There is no building here at County Road forty two. There's the Quick Trip Building at County Road thirty eight as well as the Yanoka Vet Equine Building, but no other structures. And then obviously Costco will start construction next year and then they have two outlaw sites potentially available in the future.
In, in that picture, that's the B two district, isn't that the apartment complex north of that?
The apartment complex is on these two parcels here.
Okay.
So there's the site across, this is their driveway that comes in off of County Road forty two. There's a site on either side of that.
That has no buildings. Yeah, vacant lots.
Right now they're stockpiling the apartment.
Right.
Okay, and then south of that, that
Quick trip.
We can't quite see it, but there's a Quick Trip there, but then the property that's highlighted there, isn't that a utility?
The utility is on a portion of it, but it's still intended that they would develop the balance of the property.
Okay.
It's in a corner of the property that wouldn't otherwise be developed.
Other questions or comments? Other questions and a motion?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Brittany?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty four dash fourteen, amending the zoning ordinance for regulating cannabis businesses and improve publication in summary form.
Second.
Motion by Brittany, seconded by Jeff. Is there any discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
When the planning commission was considering this ordinance, one commissioner said, quote, "It's always better to lock it down" and be more restrictive. In my experience, that is not the case and it doesn't matter what the question is, more liberty is always the answer. This ordinance would restrict businesses to the point that they would almost effectively be regulated out. Unless a licensee is able to buy out that Costco, they aren't gonna have too much luck finding a spot here in Atsigo. I find that to be hypocritical, given this council has accepted donations from this industry and we want to present ourselves as being open for new business. I also have a problem reconciling where we allow distilleries and pubs today versus where these regulations would restrict this industry. Businesses that make or sell alcohol are allowed in B one, B two, B three, B four, I one, I two, and I three districts. This regulation restricts cannabis businesses to B two and B three only with interim use permits allowed in B four, I one, and I two. That doesn't sit right with me because it has the potential to become an avenue for the council to play favorites. Atsigo has a history of hosting the first medical production facility in the state and the first CBD retail store in the metro area. To restrict these businesses now makes no sense to me and I won't be supporting the resolution.
Just for clarification though, the Costco site would have two outlots that could be small businesses, just the same as what is on thirty eight one oh one.
Correct.
So they wouldn't have to buy out Costco, they, they do have those additional outlets. It is, it is obviously their choice who they want to do business with. Is there any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion passes four to one. All right, we're moving on to city council reports and updates if anyone has anything.
Mayor, I just have a comment, but if I can finish up, you have a comment first. Or are we gonna wait for after?
We do have the recognition for you guys after. Uh, my reminder will be on Saturday, we have Santa Day, so ten to one. Go on and register and bring your family up to get photos with Santa and that will be in Public Works Garage at Overt City Hall. It's a great event, it's free for your family.
And it's gonna be thirty that day versus, yeah. Ten degrees.
Yeah. All right. The next item we have under city council reports and updates is recognition. This is our city council members, Brittany Morris and Jeff Dahl, their last city council meeting. So we do have facts that we wanted to present to you both at the end, we will take photos. Thank you. We'll take a photo after, so it's, yeah. I think I'll go first, that saying thank you for your fine dedication to the residents of Atsigo. Obviously, many nights you guys spend away from your family and it doesn't go unnoticed by anyone up here. Thank you for, for always asking my questions, meeting with staff, doing the work. So you will be missed and I'm sorry to see you, but. Thank you.
I, oh, go ahead, dear.
I concur with what Jessica had said as, as well. You guys put your heart and souls in this and it's not easy, it is a thankless job. But you came on board to represent the city of Atsigo, the residents of the, of the city and that's something that you need to be very proud of. It's not an easy job, we make a lot of hard decisions. And it's, it's very difficult. And so I just want you both to know that I appreciated everything that you've done for the last four years. And it was very good working with both of you. So thank you.
Madam Mayor, yeah. Um, I would just like to thank staff and the council as well. I think, I feel very honored to be a part of the city council and to have served our community. I have full confidence that we live in a city where staff truly, truly, truly cares about the residents of Atsigo. They, they really give it their all, they don't always live here and they're here every day. They're making us go round and round every day. So that I hope doesn't, I just hope you guys all know how much I appreciate you and how much you do for the city. And I'm so honored to raise my kids here, I cannot think of a better place to raise them. And I, I truly don't feel, as I step down, that you work for me. I really hope that you understand that I understand and I want you to know that we, I hope we work together as a resident and as city council and being able to call staff, call a council member that are newly elected to, if you have questions. So I really just do think that Atsigo is very fortunate for who we have here. That's it.
I have a little bit to talk about. Because what you've heard is staff, what does the work that you see, whether you're council, whether you're at a park, you're on driving the road, whatever. When you, a lot of people don't see staff, these residents, but as council members we do. Mayor, council, one thing I have done as a council member is I call it, I do my rounds. I visit staff members, city hall, east and west wastewater treatment facility, parking wreck. Anybody I can run into, whether it be out personally, either with a Prairie Festival or whatnot. And one job that we got or that I had to do or was able to do in my four years was we got to hire new staff. And including Ms. Hill, who has a dual role, she's done a fantastic job. Not only does she get a new role, but she, or a new job, but she also has a new role with Assistant City Administrator and HR. Thank you, Sabrina. Also, next to her is another person who has a dual role here and he's done a fantastic job. One of the roles he has, as you heard today, was our finance director. And thanks to him, last four years, a lot of hard work. And if you heard today, council has done at least ten hours or at least more work with, dealing with our, our taxes. What's going on with our tax levy and whatnot, that's thanks to that person over there, Mr. Flaherty. Had me do a fantastic job, thank you, sir. I'll address your city administrator role shortly. Person next to him, Audra, I, she brings me my paperwork every, every meeting. I consider that good luck because one thing I like to do is thank her every day I come here. Audra, you're awesome, thank you for doing that for me. Big shout out to Deputy Clerk Katie Callen, another person that's, works hard for the city, thank you, Katie. Nick Jacobs, he's another one, he's our parking wreck director. He's another one that we, he was an internal promotion. He did a, we, as a council, got to promote him as parking wreck director and he's, him and his staff, including Connie, has done a fantastic job with our parking wreck. Thank you, Nick, for what you do for the city. Next person is Kurt Niedermeyer, he's our utility director, along with Seth. Going to east and west wastewater and also dealing with our water. One thing I did as part of council is make sure we can get something going with cleaning up our dirty water, which is, of course, it's just iron. And one thing you find out, when you do more research on our water, you find out our minerals that are in our water that we need to be cleaned up. And that's why during my term, we got, we got to work on Wellhouse four, Wellhouse three, and also a new one, South Central Water Facility. That will also give us two more wells, so don't worry, east side, we didn't forget about you, but thanks to one of the minerals that is, that we need to filter. We gotta take care of that first and then we'll work on our east side that is on the agenda. So that's thought of. Kevin Lamson, or Kevin Lamson, he's our streets department manager. Another fantastic director with all his staff, including his two mechanics. Thank you, Kevin, for everything that you do for the city. IT Ben, as you saw today, helping him out or helping us out here, a little dilemma, dilemma we had before we got started. Daryl Roush, another person that we had, council got to hire. Not only did staff, we, all, what council did, we got to open that position so staff can find. So a lot of candidates on here and they picked, one of the picks that they had for us to choose from was emergency service directors, Roush, and thank you, Daryl, for every, all the planning that you've done for our fire services. Our fire, our fire trucks and now our building that we will be getting built finally after hundred and sixty six years of the city being in existence. Just a shout out to all the staff that I've, that I haven't mentioned yet, thank you for everything that you've done. And then our, our city attorney, Dave Kendall, thank you, sir, for everything that you've done for our city. To get us to this point, everything that we read, we know you've gone through it to make sure all our eyes are dotted and our teeth are crossed, thank you, sir. Our city planner and our city engineer, Dan Licht and Ron Wagner, they have over fifty five years experience with our city of Atsigo. And everything that you've guys done for the city is everything that, soon as we get out of this building, every, thanks to you guys. You guys have done a lot here and thank you for everything you've too done for the city, thank you. When you go to city hall, I mean, you can't figure, you can't forget the three fine women that you see when you first go in there, Barb, Sandy, and Mary. There's also Holly, Mary, and Julie. Make sure if there's, again, if there's any other names that I forgot, I'm sorry, but you guys are awesome and working for our city. And our council, I got to work with fine, fine, five, fine residents who got elected as council, including Tom Darkenwald, Tom. Again, you're awesome. Ryan Dunlap, council member Dunlap. I'm like, we have a lot, a lot of projects coming and I'm gonna count on you to make sure those projects are on time and on budget. Thank you, Mr. Dunlap. Great job, Ryan. Councilmember Gady, Tina, it's one thing I like about a lot of these meetings, our special meetings, whatever meetings we have. I like to wait until everybody speaks and you always, I call you a lot, a lot what you say is what I would say. But thanks to you, I don't have to. So that's awesome and you're a great mentor, since you're about, with the city or with, for me, so thank you very much. Ms. Morris, councilmember Morris, one regret I have is I didn't get a chance to vote for you again. Cause your name was not on the ballot. You've done a fantastic job with your work with parking wreck, with OHPC and admin subcommittee. Thank you for everything that you've done for the city and thank you for helping making this job fun. It is a lot of work, but it is, you helped make it fun, thank you, Brittany. Last but not least, Mayor Stockcamp, everything that you've done for the city. I mean, look, everybody I've mentioned, except for the two people on your right who've been here a little longer than you. Everything that you've done for the city, I mean, look, everybody I've mentioned, except for the two people on your right who've been here a little longer than you is because of you, you've helped hire everybody to my left, you've helped hire everybody I've discussed. You've worked with these fine people all over, including the two on the right, to have fifty-five years' experience, it's all because of you and because of that residents voted you again for a fifth term, everything that you've done for the city, you've earned it, you've earned it again and again and again. Thank you for all the voters who voted for me in twenty twenty and thank you for all the voters who voted for me again in twenty twenty-four. Fortunately, I didn't get in, but you have two fine people of council members elect Lund and council members elect Tanner, thank you, Cory, thank you, Michelle, thank you, everybody.
Very good job, thank you. All right, any other comments under city council reports and updates? Okay, moving on to staff reports and updates, Sabrina.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, just wanna say happy holidays and thank you to outgoing council members Dahl and Morris. And uh, this is likely my last council meeting for quite a few months, so hope everyone has a good winter.
Adam?
Mayor, Council, uh, council member Dahl, council member Morris, it's been a joy getting to know you over the last four years and appreciate all the hard work and time that you put into your role and the questions that you've asked staff and the things that you've helped us do here at the city, so uh, thank you both for that, uh, Mayor and all of us.
Real quick, Mayor, sorry to interrupt, and to go back to your city administrator role, which I forgot. Thank you, Adam.
Audra?
Thank you, Mayor, I'd also like to thank uh Dolls and Moore for being sworn in the same night that I was, so thank you for starting with me. Wish you were continuing, but wish you the best of luck on your next adventures.
Same thoughts, Mayor, um, appreciate working with Member Dahl, Member Morris, um, wish you the best of luck in the future. Happy holidays and nothing further to report.
Mayor, since we have no planning commission uh meetings coming up, I'll just congratulate council member Dahl and council member Morris on your term, uh, it's surprising how fast these terms go. Uh, but the most rewarding part about serving on city council or working in local government is you will see the uh benefits, the outcomes, the difference that you made each day as you continue living in Atsigo. Whether it's big projects like the water, as you mentioned, or the new parks uh that have been developed during your tenure, you've each made a difference, you've been an important part of the process and uh, you deserve, uh, congratulations for that, well done.
Thank you.
Ron?
Um, Atsigo Creek Rehab, that's still going on, uh, we expect that to be completed here in the next couple of weeks or so, except for the grass and the trees that will be uh growing in place next spring. Uh, Zuckman Meadows Trade Connoisseur, that's still going on and Carrot Sliding still has the building to put up. Um, that's pretty much it for all the projects throughout the city. Uh, Jeff, thank you for your service on the Public Works Subcommittee, um, your guidance on that and then more, your, your wit, uh, I appreciate that and uh making the city administrator comfortable from time to time, a few people that can do that.
All right, uh, Wright County deputy is not here this evening, so no updates from them. So if no one has anything else. Daryl, do you have any updates? All right. And if we have no more updates, uh, motion to adjourn will be in order.
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Brittany, seconded by Jeff, is there any?